Thank you, Jason. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Today, we have one item on the agenda. Police, 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 policies and engagement. I want to welcome Chiefs Evan Bailey and Benita Horn. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, all Council members. It's good to see everybody. Hope you had a safe and nice fourth. I'm going to share my screen. I've been practicing. Nope. Host disabled participant screen sharing. So I might need Kristi or Julia to help me out on that. If I have to describe these slides, it'll be very difficult for you.
Julia can do that in just a second.
Okay.
There you go.
Share screen. There it is. All right. Okay. Again, thank you, everybody. Ms. Benita will be joining me here in a little bit. I'll go through some slides. I know this is a lot to chew on. There's a lot of information in there, but it'll certainly start the discussion and do some follow up business as needed. But I'm going to highlight some of the topics here. This is a, I put this together with the amount of questions that we've received in the Police Department to put down the top few categories of what's being asked of the Police Department. How does your Renton Police Department operate? How do we hire? How do we train? So I have a lot of this. This is not the end all be all for everything we do, but it'll certainly address some of the issues that we're seeing today. Is Renton different? I've said this quite a few times, that I do believe Renton is different. And in light of the murder of George Floyd, it was like, are we? You know, can this happen here? What are we doing to prevent something like that? So through all of this, through chiefs, you know, I talked with Eastside Chiefs today, South County Chiefs, Seattle Chiefs, you know, everybody that's a chief in this area, we've been discussing this for weeks. And so when I look at is Renton different and the things that we're doing, I can certainly say, yes, we are. We're doing a lot of things that people are just now picking up on. Does that mean we're, you know, perfect? Absolutely not. Should we change? Absolutely. And we are making changes. So how are we making those changes? And what are we changing? So moving on, we had to, I tried to think, you know, what made us different from most places? And I would say, right off the bat, it's the hiring of the people that we do and the training that we conduct. So with that, kind of go through some of these. We had to come up with, you know, what do we look for in a candidate? Obviously, we want somebody that is highly dedicated, value personal integrity, behave in a manner that exhibits both humility and empathy. This isn't something that we put out there for a test to say, hey, you'll be the ideal candidate, but internally, this is the kind of person that we're looking for. Male, female. So our current recruitment, people wanted to know, how do we build our force? There's been some discussions over, you know, how many people do you get? Do they live in Renton? You know, how do we get police officers for the city of Renton? It's a lot like a lot of other places. It's very difficult. Every agency is short. Every agency struggles to get recruitment, to get their officers. Obviously, Seattle, King County, everybody's very, very short. So we have a very strict process to go through, to pass. So here's some of those things. The website, we use, you know, our own internal website to advertise any types of recruitments that we might have, or we always have a constant recruitment. We go to recruitment events. We had done, you know, some in Fort Lewis. We do some local ones. Colleges, we work with HR, Human Resources is a great partner with this, Brian Sandler. He works with us to set some of these things up. We send a team, a diverse team from the Police Department to go to these and do some advertising and talk to people, potential candidates. Job fairs, public safety testing, which I'll get more into later. And then our community engagement recruitment contacts. We do, before COVID, we did a lot of community engagements, speaking, coffee with the chief, our internal groups, whether it's the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, the RAP group, neighborhoods, I go and speak at neighborhood meetings, and all the time you push recruitment to get that representation from the city. So our current testing process is public safety testing. Most agencies in Washington use this. It goes for a bigger pool of candidates, and the individual can go to public safety testing, take one test, and send the results to Renton, Auburn, Kent, Seattle, you know, all these different locations, they can send those tests. So it has a bigger pool of candidates. They can test for multiple agencies, and we can set the qualifying standards, what's passing, you know, for a certain score. We then conduct the oral boards. They come in, and we usually take the top, you know, 15, 18 folks, so that we can do two days of testing. What that looks like is we have a diverse panel. We like to have all, usually the same group of folks come in and conduct the oral boards. So we want to have a nice diverse group. There's three people that sit and do the testing, and we can get through 10 oral boards in a day. So we try and do two, you know, each quarter, one on a Wednesday, one on a Thursday. And then they're scored. They're scored on the same scale. And those that come into, depending on how many we need to hire, maybe the top five will do backgrounds. We have one individual that does the backgrounds. They travel out of state. They do a lot of contacts. You do criminal histories. You do bank checks. And once all of that goes through, and you talk to neighbors, and you talk to people that might know the individual, they're very extensive in the background. And I get a blue binder at the end with all the pages of all the contacts that they've made. Once that's done, they take a polygraph. The polygraph is the final thing that they do before they tough contact me. If they pass the background and the polygraph, a suggestion is made that they come forward for a job interview with the chief. I usually sit down myself, Deputy Chief Keys or Deputy Chief Schultz will sit down and do an interview about the individual. And I can ask specific questions about what's important to them. What do they see law enforcement? What is the role of law enforcement? How important is community? What do you know about Renton? Some things like that to get to know the individual. What do they do when they're not working? Where do they see themselves in five years? So it's a personal contact that I can make with an individual before the final recommendation is made. Once the chief's interview is done, we then send them for the medical and a psychological. Psychological is an entire day of testing that they have to take. And then the medical, of course, is just general, make sure that their physical fitness is the standard. So there's a lot of numbers here, but I wanted to put, this is information from PST, and this is from May of 2017 to May of 2020. You can see the top lists the individuals of what race they come from. We have male and female as well, and this is over a three-year period. Till at the end, the very bottom total number is the total number of individuals sent to the agency. So to make an example, over the last three years, we've had 90 males, black, five females, black, four Native American males. You can just kind of go through that process. One of the problems we've always had, especially with recruiting, is in the African-American community, it's not, you know, this is not a very popular job. So that has a lot of, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that. So when we looked at things that we can change, that I will get into, it's how do we increase those numbers? How do we increase those numbers in those races that are not well represented as far as taking tests? When we get through with the test, this is just an example of how we go through, to use 2019 as an example, 456 people took the test, 384 passed. We conducted 53 interviews. Of those 53, 18 passed, and we hired four. So 0.8% of the original folks that had tested. So it's not an easy test. It's a long process. There's a lot of people that, once they do pass the test, who go through the background, something, whether it's criminal in nature or something else, it could be banks, it could be, you know, something with their integrity, if they have a history of lying or something to employers, you know, they just, they don't make it. So you can see the percentage that actually hired from who test is very, very small. Some of you might remember the testing we did back, where you see 2015, 2016, where you had the numbers of 135 interviews, 138 interviews, 141 interviews. That was at a time when all the agencies were very short and we're all competing for the same candidates. So we did a lot of interviews in an attempt to try and get ahead of another agency, while at the same time, you never sacrifice, you know, the quality of the candidate. So from this, we thought, how do we diversify our pool? How do we reach out farther? So in our recruitment, social media is a good way. I'll have a slide later that kind of explains how many people we can connect with. But using our social media to increase our exposures to a more diverse candidate pool. And this is getting embedded with certain groups. It's not just Renton Police Facebook or Renton Police Twitter. Just further going out into our social media. We found Bellevue, for example, has one individual officer that has a lot of followers and has a lot of influence, is using your own internal people to go through. So we've talked about using some of our folks to reach out into their communities to recruit people and get them to test. Partnering with our diverse community groups to connect with potential police applicants. We have the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, the RAP group, and our neighborhood meetings where we can go through and work with them to get into those communities, to provide, you know, schooling, counseling, mentorship, you know, anything to get people excited to test. Create recruitment publications reflective of our people, of colored communities. We have flyers, obviously, for recruitment purposes, but to have them more directly reflect, you know, the people that we have within the city, within the department, that's our Asian community, our Latino community, our black community, to have it more representative of those communities in different languages. So those are some of the things that we're currently changing. Also, the financial incentives. We understand that some people, and I can't remember the current cost, if it's $45, $50 to take the test, but through these groups that we create, through these partnerships with, whether it's the inclusion task force or neighborhood meetings, is to offer a financial incentive where we can give a coupon that either pays for the test or pays for a portion of the test. So those that might be hindered by financials, that we can help them still take that test. In addition, an informational study guide for potential candidates. Those people that might feel like they want to test or have taken it and have not done very well, is to offer some classes. We've done that before, where we've hosted, you know, either on a weekend, a two-hour class or three-hour class on how to test for law enforcement, for the public safety test specifically. A mentoring partnership to assist candidates preparing. It's the same thing. We can have an online informational study and then host classes where people can come in, and we can tell them what, you know, how do you dress for the interview? How do you answer certain questions? How do you sell yourself? What are some of the things that law enforcement agencies are looking for? You know, while we want to have this all for Renton, we understand we're not the only police department. So to help people get into this profession, can only help if everybody involved. And then our Summer Teen Academy. This was really important through our meetings with RAP and some of our local celebrities that we've met with, as far as how do you build that relationship and get people, you know, to be more involved with the law enforcement community. It was talking about the teens. It was talking about the younger folks, is building that relationship and getting them to trust. So we have hosted a Summer Teen Academy. It's been very, very popular. It's a voluntary academy. People from the high schools get to sign up and join in, and we take them through the whole gamut of law enforcement operations, from K-9 to the helicopter, you know, Guardian One. We take them down to Mercer Islands Police Boat. They get to see everything. Go to the academy. They go through the simulator to kind of get an idea of evidence, which is a huge thing with all the prime shows. All the evidence processing, what it takes to get schooling in that. So the Summer Teen Academy has helped us bridge that gap, or we speak with some of the youth and answer some of the tough questions and provide training in what, you know, what role does law enforcement play in the community? So that's helped out tremendously. It's grown by leaps and bounds over the last three years from when it was first created. A lot more people interested. That was the recruiting portion of trying to change and increase our engagement, you know, with folks and show them, you know, what it takes to be in law enforcement, to get to a wider group, wider community, a more diverse community, and start building that relationship. The next thing is the policies and training. You'll see on the Leftist 21st Century Policing, this is something that was brought up, I think, in several meetings, and this is a book that we've actually had here since it was created in 2015. We're lucky, one of the chairs of that committee for President Obama was Sue Rohr. She is the executive director and former King County Sheriff, the executive director of the academy. So she was one of the big proponents of that. So we've been reading this book and employing some of its, it's all recommendations. But as a result of Ferguson in 2014, it was how do you build a relationship and rebuild trust? So that's something that we've used, we use in our policies, and I'll highlight a few of those coming up. But the policies and training, and of course, the simulator there is something that allows us to do things that other agencies can't, which is, you know, shoot, don't shoot scenarios, very familiar with, but the de-escalation training. De-escalation, I hear a lot about, and that is something we incorporate in every bit of our training, and I'll kind of explain that in a minute. Use of force. This is another thing that kind of makes us a little different than a lot of those folks. If you look at our 2018 and 2019 rates of force, this is based on the total calls of service for people calling 911 and asking from the Police Department. Each year, we've used less than 1%. This could be a result, I'll get into the eight can't wait, but we've been, you know, supportive of that and our policies in line for quite some time. So we have a very low use of force rate. This is something that we've talked about breaking it down and putting it on our website. We've done a few things already to put that out there for transparency. So this is something that we're coming up with, looking at different companies do that. But to really show that the use of force as it relates to the training we get is very, very low. So I think when we go over use of force, I figured eight can't wait with what's being asked or expected of law enforcement as of late. This would be the easiest way to show our policies. Now, these slides are very meaty. They're full of content, so I'm going to just highlight some of these things. So the first one is the banning of chokeholds and strangleholds. This is something you can see in our policy, and I'm comparing this to some of the policies that were approved by eight can't wait. We've been communicating with them for a couple of weeks, but as you can imagine, they're very, very tied up. So we're waiting for them. We went ahead and posted it. We're hoping to get the seal of approval as compared to the other agencies with similar policies, but they have not gotten back to us. So the banning of chokeholds and strangleholds allows officers to choke or strangle civilians in many cases where less lethal force could be used instead. So this has been one of the biggest problems with chokeholds or strangleholds. One, we don't have, we don't train strangleholds or chokeholds. And if they were to be used, they're at the level of deadly force. When you see agencies, like nearby agencies, they have it lower on the level of force. This being at the level of deadly force means it's the only other alternative to shooting your weapon, which is the only other deadly force that we have. So it is set such a level, unlike some of the agencies that might have it at lower level, meaning we have to use it only when deadly force is authorized versus somebody that can use it with a combative subject. If they're wrestling with somebody and they're being aggressive, then they would be able to use these chokeholds. And those are some of those things you see around the region. So we changed from potentially deadly force to deadly force to bring it up to that level of the spectrum. We do not currently train in neck restraints, so only officers that have been trained can use that at a deadly force level. And those, the only people that we do have are members from our SWAT team that are used in multi-jurisdictional assignments and are more likely to be involved in the deadly force situation. The requiring of de-escalation. We have listed out some training plans. This is requiring officers to de-escalate situations where possible by communicating with subjects, maintaining distance, and otherwise eliminating the need to use force. So de-escalation, I was able to talk to the Public Safety Committee meeting, is really the idea of time, distance, and shielding. If you have time, do not escalate the time. Do not try and shorten the time if you have it. You can sit back, relax, well, not so much relax, but you can take, sit back and wait for other resources, other officers or things like that. Distance, if I don't need to be close to somebody, if I give them space to calm down a situation, then we give them space. Shielding is if I'm protected or they're in a protected area. If they're in their home alone and I'm outside, then there's no need to rush the situation to go in and provoke some kind of reaction. So de-escalation is time, distance, and shielding. Our policies here kind of talk about emergent detention, that would be your medical or dealing with somebody with mental health. We have alternatives and understand that, you know, sometimes it's a matter of just talking with somebody and getting them the required, the resources they need and not taking them to jail, not arresting them. We do what's called involuntary commitment quite often, or voluntary commitment, where you're taking somebody with mental health issues or problems, and we're taking them directly to the hospital. That's specific to the mental health side of things. But the de-escalation portion is a whole series of practices, so it's not one two-hour block of instructions, it's how you approach a use of force situation. So a lot of this is about communicating with somebody, giving them the time to, you know, you're in no rush to make an arrest or anything, have, make sure you talk to them, find out what the problem is, so you can get the right resources. And sometimes, you know, they don't need resources, that they're just at such a point where jail might be the only other option. We will wait for one, two, three officers, whatever it takes, so that there's not, you know, this one-person engagement where something might happen, the officer gets in a fight, and then has to escalate their use of force because they're alone, where two people can just simply put their hands on and handcuff them. So we practice our de-escalation and crisis intervention with every bit of training we do. The simulator has been fantastic as far as putting people in those positions where some agencies might engage with, you know, whether it's a taser or pepper spray or something like that, where we can just have them engage in dialogue and communication. It can be one way where they can just yell at us, but we will just stay there until we have the resources available to safely and quickly take care of the situation. So de-escalation is not just one thing. It's the idea of putting that time, distance, and shielding in everything you do and not rushing a situation to provoke a reaction. You have a lot, we have plenty of suicidal calls where just sitting back and getting either a negotiator or some kind of crisis team that we have locally to respond and take care of some of those things, so you don't have to rush it, especially when they're by themselves or just calling it in. Require warning before shooting. We follow the Washington State law, and a verbal warning should precede the use of deadly force where it's feasible, and that's pretty much what they have listed, is that you have to give a verbal warning if it's possible. And that is something that we do train. Every time that we put them through a shoot scenario, there's the time given where they give those warnings loud and clear. Requires exhausting of all alternatives before shooting. This is where our spectrum of force, and I wanted to highlight the bottom. When we talk about our spectrum of force, of going through all these things, if an officer is making reasonable decisions, they will not be using lethal force when an alternative exists, nor will they be using an alternative when the situation calls for lethal force. All of our actions are dependent on the response of the threat in front of you. We do not meet anything, you know, any type of deadly force if there's an alternative to that. There's, you know, you have to go through the gamut. The problem or the issue comes up is if, you know, did you go through everything? When we engage somebody in a use of force, we can go, you know, sometimes officer presence, I'll just go through, oh, it's not there yet. Officer presence is a level of force. Just being there can get some folks to comply. But if there's somebody with a bat that's hitting somebody, just our presence is not going to work. So you'll need to escalate that to your first meeting being hands-on or trying to stop the individual. So it's the same thing with shooting. You will exhaust all those things until deadly force is your only option. And at that time, they must be presenting an imminent threat of death or a serious bodily injury. We have a duty to intervene. This is something that you might have recognized from Minneapolis. Requires officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by other officers and report them. We do have a policy that says you will intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force, and they will promptly report that. Ban shooting at vehicles. It restricts officers from shooting at vehicles, which is regarded as a particularly dangerous and ineffective tactic. Our policy pretty much spells that out right from the beginning. So we are prohibited from shooting at moving vehicles except in very specific circumstances in which a threat of death or bodily injury exists. So, you know, if somebody was driving a car, our first main goal is to get out of the way and not use that as the cause of shooting. But if somebody's in a car and they're actively shooting, that's a different. They're shooting, they could be shooting at a crowd or something like that. But understanding that hitting a vehicle is certainly discouraged because it's rarely effective. So the deadly force encounter would have to have an imminent threat of that death or bodily injury, other than just the car coming at them. So this is where I was talking about our use of force spectrum. It says require use of force continuum, which is kind of spelled out on the left-hand column. Number one is your presence. Two is verbal advice, persuasion, or commands. Three, physical touching or guiding. Four, soft empty hand techniques, which are included as examples. Five, hard empty hand techniques are included. Intermediate force, and then deadly force. So the continuum says that if I show up and open a door and see a, you know, a husband or, you know, a subject strangling another person, that maybe just my presence or verbal advice or persuasion won't work. You could say, get off, get off, and if they don't, then you might have to go to that soft empty hand technique. So sometimes just the presence isn't working. It just depends on what situation is presented to you. But of course, you use the minimal amount of force necessary to accomplish your purpose. So if I want to get somebody removed, then if just grabbing them by the arm and pulling them, if that works, perfect. If it doesn't, if I'm working on pulling an arm and they're pulling back, then if I put the arm behind their back and pull them back, then, you know, you just let, went up the spectrum of force to accomplish that position, but nothing more. Comprehensive reporting. Anytime an officer in Renton uses force, they are required to fill out a report. This has always been there. They complete an incident report. It's reviewed all the way from that person's supervisor all the way up to the chief of police. So it goes through myself, well, first it goes to the sergeant who approves that, goes through the commander, to the deputy chief, and then to myself to make sure they're in compliance. It's also reviewed by our master trainer, Audrey, who can look at that and take those kind of examples and use them for the rest of the department to learn from, to use those as examples. So we do have the requirement to report, we also record every time a firearm is aimed, even if it's not shot. Every time it's aimed at somebody, they have to fill out a report, because that's just as important to us as it not being. So some of the training, the Law Enforcement Training and Community Safety Act, LETISA, comes from I-940, which started with, it had a lot of elements to it, and it had the de-escalation and crisis intervention training, some of those things I have there. Defensive tactics, and that's the level of force of using the minimal amount that you need to accomplish the lawful purpose. So de-escalation, again, it's not one block of instruction, it's how you do business. It's how you do each one of those levels of force. So we do practice that. We have been, back in way, 20 years ago, they used to call it verbal judo. So where you talk your way into some kind of compliance. It's just kind of morphed or expanded a lot into not pushing a situation or invoking somebody to do something that they wouldn't do if you weren't there. And then the crisis intervention training is something that we do each year. We do refresher training and catalog those things. The crisis intervention training, they're now starting to do online from the state academy. It's been extremely helpful in helping determine people's mental state based on their behaviors and based on family members and how they're talking, recognizing that mental health, how important it is that sometimes, you know, having fire there or calling a crisis team might be the best, you know, solution to that problem. So crisis intervention training's been really, really good for us. Defensive tactics is the training we do, which is the hands-on that includes, you know, our firearms, first aid. We're always rendering first aid. Any type of force used will result in the application of first aid. We've, you know, everybody has tourniquets. We had a recent shooting at Kulan, and that was, you know, the first thing they did is render the scene safe and start applying first aid, which included tourniquets to help a gunshot victim. And then another big thing that has come up is the inclusion implicit bias work that we have started since 2015. Actually, it started in 2014, but I'm going, I'm queuing up Benita, because I've got a couple of her slides to get a little more detail of how she worked with the Police Department. She worked with the entire city, but specifically, law enforcement was pulled off into separate groups to work with Benita and go through that training. So Ms. Benita, I can't see you, but if you are there, if you let me know.
I'm here, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to go ahead and switch the slide.
Okay, great. Well, starting in 2014, the mayor and administrator team decided that inclusion workshops, is what we call them because they support our goal of inclusion, would be required for every, everyone who works for the city. The mayor specifically let it know that his expectation was The mayor specifically let it know that his expectation was that attendance was mandatory. And so we spread the trainings out over a wide period of time to accommodate work schedules, vacation schedules, and so forth. So the first workshop started in 2014 and ran through 2015. That was really considered a foundational workshop. In that workshop, as in others, the chief and deputy chief keys were among the team of administrators and directors and managers who co-facilitated those sessions. And the foundational workshop was simply an opportunity for people to understand that inequities today are not due to intent or necessarily day-to-day decisions, but result really from the historical perspective of institutional racism across our country and how that has consistently and continually created outcomes that are disparate, particularly for people of color, poor people, and immigrants in our country. And so, and then we looked at, okay, so what does that all mean in terms of the kinds of inequities that we see in Renton today? And one of the things that we looked at was the fact that if we take any indicator that we want to track for a healthy, thriving city, you know, whether that is high full graduation rates or access to healthcare, employment, homeownership, longevity, and if we disaggregate those, that data by race and gender predictably, even in Renton, people of color fare worse than any other group. And so kind of like bringing it up to, and this is why it's important that we have the goal of inclusion. In 2016 to 17, we, this workshop focused on implicit bias, which at that time was a fairly new concept, although across the nation, police departments had already been looking at implicit bias and providing implicit bias training. And some of the research that I found showed that in virtual situations, for example, where police officers who'd been trained in implicit bias were much less likely to shoot, for example, a person of color or suspect that they were armed than an average resident might. And so it was proof that the training makes a difference. And so it was just really understanding implicit bias, which resides in our unconscious and is fed by all of our socialization, messages that we receive, and stereotypes, assumptions, et cetera, and how they actually can influence our thoughts, our decisions, our actions. And then we also looked at some specific proven strategies that can be deployed that really help to ameliorate the impact of implicit bias. So, and the third workshop ran from 2017 to 2018, and this was really looking at, you know, what do we currently have as resources that really help further inclusion? And so we looked at the Renton equity lens. At each, in each of the workshops, one of the administrators came and shared how their departments were using the equity lens to provide access to services, more equitable outcomes. And then we also at that, in that particular workshop series, had residents, many of them volunteers from the mayor's inclusion task force, who came and shared what they felt were unique experiences in their community that might be helpful for city staff to know to better serve their communities. I also want to mention at the very first workshop, the one that was the 2014-15, not only were all city staff trained in that one, but the council members at that time requested training. And so we had a special session of administrators and council members who went through together as a team. And I think about half of the current council, I know council member Corman, I think, was through that, McGurven, Prince, if I remember correctly. So the opportunity is there. 2020 would have been the next year that we launched our training. And of course, this year, due to COVID and our critical financial situation, we are delaying the inclusion workshop that would have started this year. Chief?
Thank you, ma'am, very much. I do appreciate that.
Could I just mention one more thing?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
And those of you who've been through workshops with me know this, but these are truly workshops. They're not lectures. There are experiential activities for people to have an opportunity to actually practice using the concepts introduced, small group discussions, and many different resources, videos and so forth, to really help them have a variety of approaches to the learning.
Thank you, ma'am. You bet. Thank you. Accountability. So accountability was how do you hold your officers accountable if something was to happen, if they do something wrong? So our policy, we actually have a couple of them. These were very long, so I just kind of wanted to break down that we do have a policy and take every complaint seriously and each one is looked into. The complaints can come, and typically, most of your complaints will come, hey, I didn't deserve a ticket, or, you know, I didn't run the stop sign, certain things like that. That's a majority of the complaints. But each one of those is dealt with with a phone call from the direct supervisor or whoever they called into. But every complaint is taken seriously and looked at. And now, if it could be resolved at the sergeant level, that's great. If they're not happy and it goes to the commander level, that's another option. If they want to go straight to the chief, I get, you know, I can get a written complaint. But all complaints are gone through, investigated, and then a response given to the individual. So if there was something, I don't know that there's ever been anything that ends up at the mayor's desk, but it's one of those, hey, I understand you don't like my answer, you can, here's my boss. So those are the kind of, that's the process that it can go through. If there's something significant, let's say there's a crime, I will typically have, I'll work with HR, certainly with Ellen and her team, and go outside of the department. And typically, we will stay away from the valley agencies. We have combined resources in our civil disturbance and our SWAT and our officer-involved-shooting task forces. So we'll stay away from Renton and use somebody else to kind of investigate those types of policy violations. If it's a crime, a crime is investigated by an entirely different agency altogether. So that criminal investigation still takes place regardless of, you know, I can only look at the policy issues, you know, if it was an officer, let's say a Seattle officer got arrested in Renton, then we would do that investigation and Seattle would hold that policy, you know, investigation on their own, or if they farm that up to another agency. But we do have a process to go through and each one is looked into. And the disposition of those complaints are listed there, they're pretty simple as far as unfounded, exonerated, not sustained, and sustained. The level of punishments that we are able to give are, it depends on, they're progressive in nature typically, unless there's something so egregious as an officer being arrested or significant policy violation that has to do with integrity or public trust, you know, I can go, I'll go for up to termination. And then that's just a process through our, you know, the guild if I do terminate somebody, which I've done twice in my short time here. So we have anywhere from a verbal counseling, you know, if they were rude or something on a traffic stop and the sergeant investigates that and they say, well, you're giving verbal counseling, documented counseling, days off, I mean, there's the whole gamut of things that can be given to the individual with the idea, depending on what it is, if there's a chance, if it's a training issue, if it's a failure on our part that we needed by training, they did something that they did not know and we should have taught them, then it's a little bit different and it's extra training. I can send folks to training, report writing, behaviors, you name it, counseling. Again, working with HR, there's a whole bunch of different things that I can, I can give to the individuals to help them. Or if they need to be moved along to another profession, I'll do that as well. The engagements. I wanted to put this up real quick. At our very first RAP meeting, Benita, this might look familiar, when we had the host at Renton High School with the kids that came in and parents, this was in 2015, June of 2015, then Chief Milosevic had brought these up, not telling anybody where they came from or who wrote them or anything, but it got quite a big reaction. So these nine principles, I'm going to highlight two of them, were written in the 1830s from Sir Robert Peel, who was basically the foundation for law enforcement, how law enforcement should behave. So the second one, the ability of the police to perform their duties is dependent upon public approval of police actions. How true is that today? This was written in like 1838. But the big one that really caught us was number seven, and I have to paraphrase it. It says, "Police at all times should maintain a relationship with the public." It gives reality to the historic tradition that the police are the public and the public are the police. So I usually leave it at that. If we're policing the public, who's policing the police? It should be the public. So with that, that's the whole purpose of our engagements and some of the changes that we're going to endeavor on with policies, policies and transparency. But I wanted to bring that up as a point that, you know, law enforcement in its traditional sense, you know, was on the mark, you know, almost 200 years ago. What happened? So we use a lot of our engagements, one of the things that came out of 21st century policy, you know, the strategies, was really engaging your community. And each community is different, and so the results from each of those engagements will be different. You have to find out what your community wants. But one of the action items was, in order to achieve external legitimacy, we should involve the community in the process of developing and evaluating policies and procedures. As it stands right now, we use it, a company called Lexipol. There's thousands of agencies that use that. It's made up of human resources and legal attorneys and law enforcement professionals to find out what's the best practice or what is state law that you have to have in your policies. So it's quite large, and when you go through our policy manual, which is, it's posted online, it has been there, we have kind of tailored it to be a lot easier to see with a simple link to like eight can't wait, but you can certainly review any policy you would like in the police department. But how do we get, you know, our policies and procedures and start this conversation with the community? So when I look at the practices that we had in place, we had some programs, some events, and we had discussions, but there was never a distinct, you know, the inclusion task force has tackled city policies before. So using that same framework of taking a certain policy, whether it's use of force, you know, traffic stops, you can take just about any policy that we want to go over and take it to some of these different venues. We have the inclusion task force, which I just presented two weeks ago, I believe, and gave them that information to say, hey, we're going to be looking for community members and some engagement pieces through our RAP group, RAP American Pastoral Group, through our social media. Speaking with my social media teams, we actually have a direct link to neighborhoods that encompass over a third of our population. That's a great way to put information out there. I've already initiated some polling to kind of get some feedback as far as how they, how much involvement they want to have. We included, you know, Coffee with the Cop, Coffee with the Chief. These one-on-one conversations that we had had in the past were probably some of the best because a certain person or individual from the community would come up with a problem and you can get that direct response and have that communication. So how do we make that bigger? Some community meetings can go, you know, left or right, depending on who's facilitating them, but we can certainly narrow these down to some of the groups that we already have, but also create some new ones. So I put what's next. As we begin to contact the community and say, hey, we want to talk about policies, we want to talk about procedures, how do you feel? What do you think of this? Is to start this conversation to find out what does our community want? You know, I've been able to go to neighborhood meetings back before the COVID, is to reintroduce that. We can go to Nextdoor, we can narrow down to singular neighborhoods, we can use our RAP contacts, our inclusion task force to speak. I know I've spoke with a small group from the Asian community through council member Kim Konpon. And some of those things, we can create more opportunities and actually drive the conversation to say, here's some policies, what, you know, from our feedback, we're getting, you know, distrust, or if it's the accountability or, you know, our budget, you know, whatever it might be, to find out what each community is looking for and how we can have that discussion and make some changes. One of the good things about Lexipol, if it's not state law, we can change them. I have a discussion with the guild, I have a discussion with our trainers and our command staff, and I'm sorry that my light for some reason keeps going out. I have these discussions and we can talk about what's best. And so to have that communication with the public, it's just one, going to improve our relationship, but also give us some real good insight as to what they want their police department to look like and what they want us to do. So we can go through these engagements. These are some of the outlooks, or some of the contacts that we have currently through Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter, and it continues to grow each day. We've had, I've been so thankful for the support of the community with the messages that come across and they're able to kind of reach out. I've got tons and tons of letters, you know, from our engagements through that sense, is now how do I take that to have a conversation? Now, not everybody uses social media. Not everybody looks at Facebook. You know, we talked about mailings in the newsletters for, you know, when they get their bill, you know, how can we engage these folks? But really, I'll be counting on these groups, either through Nextdoor, the RAP group we have, back to, you know, monthly meetings, meeting with them, is how do I get to, you know, whether it's their congregation or their neighborhoods, talk to some of our more diverse officers, and how do we get them engaged through either social media or in those groups? Through some of the help, through the folks that we have, we can reach out and just start having those conversations to those areas that, you know, social media doesn't normally get to, or if they don't care. So understanding social media is not the end-all, be-all, but it certainly gets a larger population than we've ever touched before. So I, like I said, we're doing some polling right now on our website. We've put our budget on there to easy read transparency. As you know, our budget's mostly operational, we have no projects. It's all, you know, I think almost 60% is salaries and, you know. So all of that's up there to create the conversation. And now it's just a matter of taking the venues, instead of having, hey, Renton, come in, we're going to have a town hall. We need to specifically focus, you know, I do business meetings through the Chamber. They've been extremely helpful, again, neighborhoods, through RAP, through individual people to say, hey, can you talk to my neighborhood? Absolutely. We can do all those things and have a checklist of items through our polling and through these discussions on topics that we need to talk about, things that we need to take a look at and give them the opportunity to change those. But I really wanted to get FaceTime, just like a Coffee with the Cop, the FaceTime where they can ask a question, get immediate response, and take care of some of those things and have those discussions. Legislation, as you know, there's been a lot of things. I was in, on the phone, or meeting today with Susan Del Benet, she's Congresswoman from the North, but we've been having a lot of meetings, all the chiefs, the South End chiefs, all of King County chiefs, we meet at least once a month. All the Valley chiefs, we meet once a week. I was speaking with my friends from Tuculpa, Kent, Auburn today. So we're all aware of the legislation that's about created, you know, some of the things that are being discussed. And one of the things that they had brought up was the standardized, standardization of use of force. So make a statewide standardization. They talked about a national model. I don't know how far they'll get with that. Certainly in King County, we were all for a standardized, because if you think of, especially like with a neck hold, you can drive from, or 167 from Renton through Tuculpa, Kent, Auburn, and you will have different expectations on their uses of force. So a lot of that drives a culture, you know, how do they behave? So that's why I say, well, Renton is different. We've always been a little bit more strict, for lack of a better term, in our policies, you know, car chases, we just simply don't do them unless somebody's life is in danger. And then, of course, the neck holds, it's a deadly force where some are lower. So if you had a standardized use of force, you know, if you drive through Renton, Kent, Tuculpa, Auburn, you know, they would all be similar. So the expectation of how they behave would be very close. Officer-involved-shooting investigations, that's another one they want to do, they want to get away from, you know, we've already kind of changed it. Actually, Renton, some of you might know, was the model for the state. When I-940 came about, our teamwork or our partnership with Auburn, Kent, Tuculpa, Federalway, Des Moines, Port of Seattle, all of them, we all have a pool of detectives. So if there's an officer-involved-shooting in Renton, no Renton officers are involved in that investigation at all. Typically, you'll have a lead agency like Des Moines will come in, or Federalway will be the lead, somebody else will do evidence. So you have that independent from that agency. So that was the model. We've had King County, Seattle, everybody's asked to be part of our team, but just based on bandwidth and workload, we can't take on those, you know, that much, that much work because the detectives that are part of that have their own daily responsibilities. You know, certainly an officer-involved-shooting takes a lot more. So the officer-involved-shooting investigations, we had that one, and we were the first. So, the officer-involved shooting investigations, we had that one, and we were the first to have a civilian member as part of that, our community representative volunteer that oversees, that gets to sit in the briefings with me, that gets to see some of the information that's presented, to make sure in the end that there's an independent investigation that's done and the rules will follow. So Renton was the first in the Valley to do that. We started work on that in February. We sent out, we used Ms. Benita Horn again. She sent out all the messages to the Inclusion Task Force, the Latino Task Force, and the Asian Task Force to see if we could get members. So we've gathered a few members, three members that have gone through a background, and one has already taken place through the May shooting. We had this individual come in for the brief, gets all the press releases, and is part of that process. And she's doing absolutely wonderful. Member of the community, does a lot of volunteered work, so there's certain things. So, all that to tout our own officer investigations. But if the state comes by and wants to do, establish something where, you know, it's completely void of, like our Valley Independent Investigation Team, something else, I can tell you, all the chiefs were for that. If they have the right training, they have the right personnel to investigate and collect evidence, there wouldn't, you know, that's just easier for our folks to, you know, not have another thing to worry about. Civil service rules for hiring, I'm restricted if somebody tests, going back to the testing and in our recruiting pool. One of the changes I forgot to mention, this made me think of it, but when I hire, I can only pick, you know, the top five. You know, I have the rule of five, that I can pick anybody within this five-person list. For promotions internally, I can only, I have the rule of three, I can pick anybody within these three regardless of the rank. So civil service changes would allow me to hire a much wider pool to get into somebody that's qualified, that passed, that might come from a diverse background, that that would allow me then to reach out and change, you know, what our department looks like, the hiring practice. So that's something that's being presented. As it stands, I have the rule of five. But going back to what I was initially, you know, how we want to expand that pool, is if you remember, you know, we conducted, let's say, 30 interviews to hire 14 people, how do I get more people in front of the table? Just because you scored an 85 or above, and that's all we can manage, doesn't mean you're gonna be a good cop. So how do I get down into the lower, you know, a more broad range of people that have taken the test to have that face-to-face time with them? So we can say, hey, yep, this is a person we want. It gives me a wider breadth to choose from, or not choose from, but a wider breadth for people to actually get FaceTime to test and then establish themselves on the list. So that's something else we're doing. We're trying to find a way, you know, when we test, we gotta bring people in for two days, take them off the road, or overtime, where they conduct these interviews. We're gonna have to do that either more or have more of a gateway test to bring more people to the table. But that's something that we're working on, is so I can get a bigger pool of candidates from everywhere that we can, that have an opportunity to test for us. So that was the civil service, changing the rules so that I have more flexibility and being able to reach out to, and it was specifically to diverse communities. And then arbitration. This is where, you know, I was talking with Bruce Linton from Tuck Willa today, because he's going through this. You have an officer that has done something wrong and you terminate them and they fight, you know, the guild fights and then they come back. So they're trying to introduce legislation to keep that from happening. The chief's rule, if I terminate you, you do not have that option. And they would keep the arbiters to simply salary and benefits. So this is something new. I have no idea how successful that would be as a chief that makes those decisions. It certainly makes it a lot easier, but that's something that has to be worked on as far as arbitration and how that's gonna work. But as it stands now, I think I heard a figure of 47% of officers that get terminated can get their jobs back. So, I've not had that personally here, but that's not to say it couldn't happen. So that's something they're looking at. I can tell you, one of the concerns, and this isn't on the slides, but it made me think when I was talking with Tuck Willa, was, you know, when you terminate somebody, you fill out a sheet of paper that basically goes to back to the academy who determines on whether or not they're certified. So I had an individual where I filled it out, based on the purpose for termination, this academy or the state says, okay, they are now decertified, they cannot be law enforcement in Washington. So we were trying to figure out, what agency would go through and do a background and not see that? Like, you know, as thorough as ours, our, you know, what agencies are out there that are hurting so bad, they might pick somebody that was terminated? I don't know, but we found it kind of mystifying that somebody would actually do that. But it sounds like maybe, maybe in Washington, certainly on the East Coast or something, that these things are taking place. But as it stands right now, if I have terminated somebody, or even if they resign in lieu of termination, I still fill out that form, the academy can decertify them, so they are no longer certified in Washington State and cannot practice law enforcement. Okay. So with that, I figured there'd be some questions, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am, I'll stop sharing my screen unless somebody needs to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you, Benita. That was a lot of information, but I know that it's responding a lot of the emails and questions that the community has been asking us. So I appreciate that. With that, I ask council members to have any questions.
I see council member Ryan McIrving.
All right, thank you, Madam President. So I had a couple of questions, I'll just try to, I assume other people have similar questions, so I won't ask them all, I'll see, and then I'll come back, and I might have another one at the end. So the first one I wanted to ask, thank you, by the way, both Chief and Benita, great presentation. It confirms a lot of what I already knew about the high standard that our department is. I'm, of course, encouraged to hear that we plan to get better. One of the areas I had a question during the presentation was on, was on One of the Eight Can't Wait. So your slide showed there were about 100 incidences, or 100 uses of force, 100 occasions of use of force per year. And I'm going to the duty to intervene portion of that. Do we have any reported cases? Are there, do we have metrics that we track like that? So, I mean, obviously there are reporting, so I'm curious, out of those 100% cases, are there any known cases? I just wanted to know, is the system working? Are officers holding each other accountable?
Right. We do not have any cases of the, a reporting of unlawful use of force, nor do we have any complaints of that, meaning from the individual. So, we don't have any, like I checked the box where the officer had to step in. I bet right now that that would be in the form of telling the supervisor, and I don't have any reports or anything like that. Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Corman.
Yes, thank you. So, I had a few questions, I'll just, some of the top ones that came up were, Chief, I was wondering if you know if the state legislature, when they're looking at recruitment and hiring, something else that kind of jumped out at me is, you mentioned that, of course, there's background checks, you mentioned there were bank checks. But I was wondering if, you know, if some of those are under review, just because of, for bias reasons, you know, people of color maybe were picked up for something that somebody who was white might not have been picked up for. And, you know, I'd sure love to know that we're working on getting that sort of systemic cycle of racism out of the background check process. And also, I mean, if there's banking issues, you know, some people just don't have as much money as other people, so they might be more likely to have cashed a bad check or something like that. So I was just wondering about that.
Yep. So I should be, I don't know about the state legislature, sir, but I will tell you that if you have bad credit or bank report, that's not a disqualifier. Usually, it's the, you know, seven times to collections with the drug habit that'll get you. So, we don't have, so there's a lot more, there's only, you know, significant crimes that are automatic disqualifiers. But I will say that, you know, when we get, you know, we don't get addresses, education, and one of the new things that HR has come up with, when an applicant comes in, we don't have any of that information. You're taking them for an oral board interview and their scores. So none of that information is included. During the background, we have a few automatic disqualifiers, but they're usually, it has to be a combination. I'm not looking for somebody that's, you know, perfect. Honestly, I think one of the best things is somebody that has gone through challenging times, has made bad decisions and learned from them. They, you know, you can look at the boxes somebody's checked in life with the degree, the military or whatever, but those people with life experience, they are of extreme value to me. So, you know, if it's a banking, or even an arrest, or, you know, smoked marijuana or whatever it is, you know, those life experiences are more, are better for us out on the street because they can, you know, relate to individuals, so. But to your point, yes, I don't know about the state legislature, but there should be, and we can certainly look at some processes to make sure none of those implicit biases are falling in there.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate that. I appreciate that answer, and I have another one, but I'll let the council go around, make sure there's enough time for everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Benidetti, did you have a question?
I did, thank you. So this is actually for Benita. So Benita, you had mentioned that there was a training plan for 2020 that was furthering the inclusion series that we had, that had been started in 2014, 15. What had been the topic of that training? And is it possible to conduct it in a virtual environment since we are not able to do it in person?
Councilmember, we hadn't determined what the content of the training would be. One of the things that we do at the start of each planning is convene with the, meet with the administrators to find out, what are current issues? You know, either that their staff are facing as they strive to serve the community, you know, what it seemed to be, roadblocks that come up based on their development plans for their teams, what's missing? And so we hadn't reached that final point of determination. We were planning to look at perhaps, we've done training both ways. The first two years, we did training in small groups, with about 20 to 25 people. And then when we did the last training, we did it in larger groups, except for the police department, because of their, you know, 24/7 schedule, many of their sessions had to be in the evening to accommodate people being actually on work time. And so, we were thinking about some larger-scale trainings for 2020, focusing on, well, there have been a number of things that we've done kind of as test pilots. We did, we used the Under Your Skin program from the Seattle Times, and we did a community-based training, about 100 people participated in that. We also did at one of our quarterly managers, a poverty simulation that was facilitated by WSU. It's a simulation that they developed that in, it gives people, in basically half a day's time, the opportunity to have a lived, a simulated lived experience of what it feels like to be poor, and what are some of the daily challenges you face. So we were thinking about something more that would, that more of, that would be a simulation, that would give people a chance, because we got such high marks from those workshops, because people felt that they gained useful information, useful experiences that really helped them do, be more effective in their day-to-day jobs. No, all of that to say, no final decision had been made for 2020, and about the time we would have started our planning, everything went on hold because of COVID. If you have any ideas, please let me know.
Well, it just seems that even though we, I mean, this being such a vital and important topic right now, that it really, we'd be missing an opportunity if we didn't try, even in the environment that we're in, to try and do some kind of, to let it go so long, especially when this is such an important topic, it just doesn't, doesn't feel like the direction we want to go.
Thank you, Councilmember Benidetti. Any other council members that have questions? If not, I'm gonna come back to Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Council President. This question is for the chief, and thank you so much, Chief, for your presentation. We very much appreciate it, because I know that we've had a lot of comments and questions regarding our policy. But on the same line as Councilmember Corman's question, you mentioned earlier, for example, that if the individual, the applicant, had about maybe seven collection and a drug issue, that probably that might potentially disqualify. Do we in fact have enumerated, like a rubric of certain crimes that would disqualify the individual? Because if we talk equity, a lot of folks, and I see that what you're getting at is that we want someone who is going to join the force with humility, with the empathy for others. So haven't had, you know, folks, for example, who've committed certain crimes themselves, then applied to be a part of the enforcement, how does that work?
So, it's not a rubric, you know, we don't add the points up, that gives you very little leeway if you do want that. I can tell you, one of our most recent hires has been fantastic, had a lot of different opportunities to go the wrong direction, but experienced a lot of things within the family, and it's a Renton kid. And if it was tallied up as far as rubrics, probably wouldn't have made it, but he was fantastic. His life experience, and he asked me why I hired him, and my answer was, because what he can provide to this community, you can't get in a school, you can't get in the military. So, we do have a policy, I can get that to the council as far as what it takes, you know, what some of those things are. One of the things that we can't do is like hallucinogenics with the, if you've done a lot of LSD or something like that, you can be prone to have some kind of medical condition. So there's certain things, you know, known felon or DV, domestic violence, you cannot. So, there are certain things that are automatic, but it's a combination of things that if it turns out that this cannot be a trustworthy, or, you know, sometimes you can see people are just looking for, you know, money, you know, for money or something like that. So, I can get that policy, I can send it to the council, but there is no set criteria that says this plus this equals. So, yeah, I can get that for you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Van. Councilmember McIrving.
Yes, thank you. So the next question, and good questions asked, well, it's definitely some of them came off my list. So the other one I had was also on reporting and on the transparency issue. So, the other, and we've heard this, I think, from multiple community members in terms of increasing transparency. You mentioned that we do have pretty comprehensive reporting for any use of force, you said even if they draw a weapon or any of that. Is that information that's readily available to the public, or do they have to do a full public records request to get that? What's our mechanism of conveying that information?
Well, before, it was the full public records request, that usually attorneys will draw on that. So what we were looking at, there's different companies, I've been looking around at all these different agencies that publish that information, so I'm looking to publish it so that you can see, you know, the data, because 100 is not a lot in 80,000. So, people can request it, but we're gonna publish it, trying to figure out what form. You know, it's like $10,000 to $15,000 to put it on there, where I'm looking at it, it's a pie chart that shows, you know, male, female, level of force. There's certain criteria, I think we can handle that ourselves through our crime analyst, Alana. Hopefully she's not watching, she doesn't know this yet, but we talked about it. Is having her put together something that people can go and click on and see our data for uses of force. I know some of the agencies, I think Seattle's, the bigger ones that have had problems, had to do that, but there's no reason why we can't put something like that out, just to make it easier to see and digest. So, you kind of reminded me, thank you, sir. We are gonna put that out there. Right now, it's just a public records request.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Corman?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to thank Councilmember Van for the follow-up question, and I have one more, and this is relative to the background checks. I just wanted to add that if we, if it's just a small, well, it's a subset of, say, criminal experience with the criminal justice system or whatever, that it's just a subset of that that would disqualify somebody. I think it would be good to know what those disqualifying items are, so that somebody who maybe has a, you know, a drug conviction in their background that you would actually very much consider, would know that they should go forward with this process if they want to go into being a police officer, because you pointed out, they have to pass the test and they get down selected, and it's such an ordeal, and if somebody has this view that, oh, but I had a marijuana possession before marijuana was legal, so I'm not, you know, even gonna be eligible, it'd be good for them to know that they are eligible. Anyways, so I was gonna just ask, and I know that this is a question that the answer's probably long, and I, and we don't have that much time, but when we were talking about the use of deadly force, you mentioned if it's, if an officer fears, you know, that they could be killed or sustain a serious body they could be killed or sustain a serious bodily injury. And I know that's probably the confusing one because if somebody did have a baseball bat, to use your earlier example, I guess if they were close enough and malicious enough, they could do a serious bodily injury. Of course, if they're at some distance and not that strong, they maybe couldn't. But it's probably those kind of gray areas that, you know, where things can really go wrong. But, and I know you've talked before about as part of the response to threats, the police officers can take a defensive position. So if somebody had a baseball bat, presumably they can back up before pulling their weapon. Can you talk a little bit about how you, how we make those, how we discern that? And also maybe that's part of what the state legislature's looking into? Is that right?
Yeah. Well, their use of force, it's tough. We're getting into, and a couple of things, just to answer your question, sir, not to get off track, but as far as the disqualifying factors, we also have to remember that they will be required to testify. And so any type of serious criminal violation could certainly hurt a case. So if somebody comes and takes care of one of your loved ones that was assaulted and then the case turns into something else in court about their history or drug use, bank robbery. So those are some of the things. But also, yes, sir. So I can tell you, like the baseball bat, we had an axe, you know, guy on 405 with an axe, you know, hitting cars and stuff like that. So those are all circumstances that, you know, it's the officer on what they view. So what we train is, you know, if he's going out and hitting cars, we have to stop him. So what they did is they used a taser. They could keep the distance and they could use that. I can imagine the same thing because I don't want to speak on every officer's interaction, but it's based on what they have. If I have to do something, if they're going to hurt somebody, I, you know, usually a taser is one of our go-to things. If I have two people, if it's a bat or something like that, it would be a taser. But we've had plenty of officers and unfortunately it happens more often than you might think if there's some kind of weapon or something where they, two people go up and tackle them. We practice a certain technique where two people lock the arms and one puts the other, you know, does an arm bar takedown. So, you know, it's depending on what the situation is. Am I in danger? Okay, then I have tools and if I can back away, that's fine. Typically, we're going to find ourselves where somebody else is at risk, somebody in danger. So it depends on what, how bad, you know, is that? But typically our taser, and even when the taser goes off and doesn't work, it's enough of a, you know, a diversion that we always will have two or three or more officers there where it's just kind of a, you know, hey, diddle, diddle, let's go in the middle, pile on kind of thing. So I, you know, it would be very hard, I think, for the state to say, unless this threshold is met, you can, you can use deadly force because it differs for, you know, in each situation. But with de-escalation, it is putting that distance of, okay, if they're dangerous, but they're dangerous to themselves, that's, you know, I don't need to rush that, I don't need to put myself in danger to initiate a response. So we have a lot of standoffs, you know, people will complain, neighbors will complain that, hey, why aren't the police going in? It's because we're doing de-escalation, we're talking, trying to communicate and hire. So I don't know if I answered your question about the state. I think they'll probably look at the use of force and make sure everybody is online with what level force should be at, like a lateral neck restraint or, you know, hitting or a taser. All those things will probably be put in a priority and it'd look a lot like what ours is.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, Chief. So I see that several council members have questions and I also have several questions about implicit vias and community engagement. So I'm going to decide to table this conversation and bring it back to our next call just for a purpose for questions and answers. So that way we don't feel rushed to respond or council members to try to make sure that the question gets answered, if that is okay with you, Chief and Benita.
Of course. And it'll give time for people to read all the, I know, like I said, that's a lot of meat to chew on, so please take your time. And if there's something else that comes out of it, I'll be more than happy to address it.
Once again, thank you very much, all, and this meeting is secure. Thank you.
Thank you.